And I want to mention that the need to have inclusive, transparent, participatory process before issues come to this board is critical. So we have to make that happen. We have to figure out how to do it. If it costs money, we have to figure out how to get the money to do it, but it has to happen.
Pre-planning board meetings with neighborhoods, I think we could just change that strongly suggest to a mandate in our rules, we could do it at the next meeting if we decided we wanted to do it.
Personally, I think we're a good board that does good work.
So, you know, so we put a lot of effort and time into this and, you know, I'm just, I'm very proud of the work that the board does.
So, yeah, I think we do work hard and we do a pretty good job. Overall, I agree with my colleagues, we work hard, we were committed to the public interest. We may not always agree what is in the public interest in a given instance, but we are 1,000% committed to the public interest.
I'm going to start with what I think are some transparency measures that I think would help us better communicate to the public the good work that we do. Because I do think a lot of the frustration that we've been receiving from the public is less about us not doing our job than us not communicating well what we are doing.
Well, I'm very proud of what the planning board has done in the years that I've been on the board and the years before that, before I was on the board. And I think it's interesting that it was probably less than a year ago that there was a celebration of what Roger Booth and CDD and the whole city had done. And there was this love fest about how wonderful everything had been in the city and how beautiful it turned out and the changes that had been made. And it's, you know, somewhat inexplicable that we went from nine months or a year ago to this is great to we're broken. And I don't believe that.
This is a democracy. People should be able to come and talk, hand their responsibilities to the neighborhoods. And the thing is, we actually rely a lot upon neighborhood review and neighborhood comments.
The, and let me give you the example, the building being built where the Gourmet Express used to be was one of my favorite stores. It never came before the planning board. It didn't have to. So whatever's being built there, you haven't reviewed, we haven't reviewed. So I think that's a problem. And I think maybe a proponent said, I'm not going there, I'm going to build something that's by right. And maybe we lost something.
I went today, I was looking at today's cases and I was on O'Brien Highway and there's a Marriott Hotel under construction, nearly done on O'Brien Highway, where I think there used to be a sausage plant. And I didn't know about that building. We don't actually ever know about buildings that you don't see. You know, it looks like it, it's okay. And I'm curious that it's as small as it is, to tell you the truth, because there's a tall story building behind it, which is really why I was up looking there.
It intrigues me that, you know, I've been on the board now for 14 years, and it just intrigues me that over the past year, it feels like to me that people are, you know, I don't know whether it's that there's more construction going on or what's going on, but that people are very, not happy with the planning board and our decisions and the way in our process. And we, for many years, met twice a month. And then about two years ago or so, we upped that to three times a month because we're getting out of here at midnight. And we're still getting out of here most times at midnight, or 11 o'clock or whatever. We're still, so I don't quite understand why that's happening, if there's more development that's been going on or, you know, or what's happening. Do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, you have to admit, we are...
Right, we're spending more time. I think there are a few particular cases that have taken a lot of time and that there are more cases than on average, some of those have taken a lot more time.
This is because of the significant number of projects that have been before. I mean, I think the board certainly is well aware of the fact that we've gone from sort of twice a month meetings to now more often than not having three times a month meetings, someone's actually pushing for it.
You know, then because of the nature of this city and the resources we have, then it's really the staff that does more of the planning, you know, your function, but we are part of that function. And I, you know, I don't know what their philosophy and outlook is.
That then perhaps comes to one of the huge questions, the staff versus, the CDD versus the planning board. Now, if you read the State Enabling Act, it's written for the 300 or so towns in the Commonwealth that don't have planning staffs, or maybe have a part-time planner. And so it invests responsibilities in the planning board to deal with planning issues in the town. Boston has its own act that governs how it functions, or how it's supposed to function. So I do a rough calculation, which is, you know, I take the number of hours the planning board spends in terms of the number of members, and I compare that to the number of hours that the staff spends. And it usually comes out that the staff spends somewhere between 95 and 99% of the total amount of time that's spent on planning in the city. So the notion that we are directing the activities of the staff is not correct. Someone said we should tell the staff to do something. We always request the staff to do something, but in fact, we've been trying in recent years more effectively to work closely together to understand the roles that the board brings and that the expertise the staff brings, making that clear to everybody, to you, to us, and to the people, the staff sitting in the front row, the people who are sitting beyond the front row, who are trying to fit into that system to make, to give the advice to the city about what's going on. That's a very important task. That might end up going to the legislature. Because my gut feeling is, we don't actually do what the law tells us to do on planning. We're trying to be sensible and take advantage of the fact that we've got a big staff, we have a rich city, and we do a lot of planning, and it's done by the staff.
And then, of course, there's the developers and the project proponents themselves. And I think that in the end, as we look at project review and the role that all the public agencies play, we have to remember that this is their project. It's the proponent's project, it's the property owner's project, the developer, their team, and they, in the end, they always have to bear some responsibility for the process that they undertake in order to advance their proposal.
How do we make this process work better for everybody involved? How do we make it so that it is, that it both is and feels more transparent, more understandable, more accessible to people? How do we make it so that it works more efficiently for people, I think, as well? And you will never be able to satisfy everyone. You're, you know, you're making decisions, and sometimes they're decisions that please some and displease others. But what we do want to get to a point is where people feel like it is an open, transparent, accessible process, and one in which people feel like they have been heard, that they have been listened to, that they have been understood, even if they're not necessarily agreed with.
So I was very interested in the notion of public interest that Lyle McKey's brought up, because he's suggesting that it's something different than what's in the ordinance. And I've always felt that the public interest was embodied in the ordinance, the public goals, the things that we wanted for the public space in the city, we wanted in terms of impacts, all of it was embodied in the ordinance, and that our major goal was to say, well, did the project achieve that? Now, there's a suggestion that, no, that's not the public interest, that the public interest is something else. And I know that when the council does rezonings, I'm always amazed at what they extract from tough guys like MIT. And that's the way the council thinks, that every project should have some other list of benefits that isn't in the ordinance, isn't something that is a priority for granting permit, but is something, so clarifying that for everybody, I think, would be helpful.
And I think we should address that head-on. Similarly, I think we are so used to getting great memos from the traffic and parking staff on all of the conditions that are going to be included in the special permit in order for the project to meet the criteria, all of the TDM plans, the shuttles, the traffic signalization, we just say, and of course, you're going to include everything that's in the traffic and parking memo, right? Yes. And we don't take the time to enumerate what all those things are. And so perhaps the public thinks that we're not getting anything for the special permit, when in fact, the developer is making very significant commitments to mitigation in order to give back to the city and make the special permit worth giving.
The gentleman who said that, you know, okay, what is reciprocal, what is the public getting back from the special permits? Usually, when we look at a project, we make sure that we get something back, whether that be trees planted, or public open space, or sidewalks expanded, there's, you know, we always look for something that will improve the project for the public.
Or how the public comments were not on items under review by the planning board.
But, you know, we do really welcome your input and need your input, but as he says, the repetition doesn't necessarily help us when we're sitting here for an hour or two hours listening to the same thing. We know there's a lot of traffic, we know there's parking problems, we know this building may be taller than a lot of people like. So we're not trying to stifle input, we welcome and cherish the input, but it's the repetition that I think makes us seem like maybe we're not listening or not paying attention, but we really are.
And here's something which I'm scared to talk about, which is public input. I'm scared because I might say what I really think, which is, most public input at our hearings isn't very helpful. And I don't think it's telling people out there, oh, just be more disciplined and do your homework and talk about what we're interested in. I think we have to understand why, what we're looking for from the public, and what we can reasonably expect, and what tools the public need to be, to give us what we would like to get. When I was on the zoning board, and Tom was on the zoning board at a different time, I always loved it when the butters came, because they were people who were really interested, they really, and they would talk about what their interests were, and that was wonderful. They were just, and they were giving us hard information. And it's like, that's, to me, is the most important thing, is knowing what people, the particular knowledge they have about the case that's in front of us, that can help us, can expand our understanding. Now, you don't have to be a butter to do that. I'm thinking of somebody probably in this room who came to us and said, have you thought about the noise at the loading dock at Whole Foods that's right across the railroad tracks from 75 New Street? Well, I had it. Now, that was, you know, and, oh, maybe we should have, we should have, you know? But somebody did think about it and came and said, you think about it. And that was, that was wonderful. Let's not ignore that, from our point of view, the public input is often not helpful. And if we could try to figure out ways, figure out why, and how to help that.
And I, you know, you can all keep your game faces on, but if you've been in Cambridge, you'll know that one of the things we do here is when things don't turn out the way we want them to turn out, someone will say, excuse me, I have a problem with the process. And I think that's one of the things that's happening here, the information technology to reach the public. We don't have it.
I don't think our website does that particularly well. We do not get everything up there that we should, we don't get it up there in a timely manner. And even I, and I, like Ted, I tend to prefer to find the stuff on the website. I cannot find everything on the website as quickly as we need to in a meeting, and it feels like I ought to be able to.
One item on communication is broadcasting. I'm a developer, I get by trade, and I've worked in a lot of towns and cities, say, over the years. And virtually every municipality in which I work, the planning board meetings here are broadcast.
Televised, yeah.
They're televised.
Yeah, they are.
I mean, these are towns where the population of the whole town is about the same as my block in mid-Cambridge, you know? And somehow or another, you know, they can pull together the resources to broadcast. And I think that's really something we should be doing here. And we have a sort of funny role, because, you know, it is a quasi-judicial role. We're not elected politicians, you know, where we can freely make policy or enact planning. Our job is to implement existing planning and to enforce existing zonings. So, I mean, we have to work within those constraints. And the worst thing that you ever want is a board that feels free to do whatever they subjectively feel like in any particular case. That might cut in favor of your, you know, particular views in this case, but it might cut against them in the next one. You know, that's not what we want to do. We want to act as professionals, and we want to act within the four corners of the law.
It's all about the special permits. And the liberty is, it's 49 to zero or 62 to zero, whatever it is, that we, we in general, review projects, subject them to scrutiny, get changes if they're needed, and then approve. That's what we do. And that's what people wish we didn't do, or some people, in every case, wish we didn't So I think we can, we have to go beyond this thing that's saying you can't make everybody happy, to go into the deeper question as to why, what do people expect us to do? And I think, and it came in a comment tonight from Mr. Levy, I think, which was, you didn't pay attention to us. And I think the answer that I, that came to my mind was, we paid attention to what we could pay attention to, we heard everything, it came in, but there were, when we came out with our decisions, we were making our decisions according to the findings that were required to be made. So, and then there's another, not as, handoff responsibilities, there are a lot of suggestions. The way to fix the planning board is to hand its real responsibilities to somebody else. Because anybody else will do it better, I guess, like the city council, like a civilian design review, a city design review board that's different than the planning board Or, and here, here, you know, it's like, you know...
There are some interventions, as Brian mentioned, that would really be out of the purview of the city council, and those would be the kinds of interventions that would involve zoning changes to create new regulations. The city council has a great amount of power in that respect, but, you know, it's also, as many people pointed out, zoning regulations can be sort of a blunt instrument. So they can, they might not have the same kind of finesse that either the planning board working within its own procedures or staff might have.
I do want to echo what Hugh said about clarifying the issue of whether or not, when a plan or application meets the special permit criteria, if we are to presume that it has satisfied the criteria, that it is in the public interest. That has also always been my understanding. That's my understanding from reading the statute and from the case law. If it is not what the city council intends, and I think it could very well be at odds with the state law, and a solution to that should be pursued. I don't feel that that is something we are at liberty to change. But if there is direction on that from a higher source, you know, I would be open to that, because I do think it is a source of great frustration to the public who comes to us and expects that we have more discretion to deny a permit that meets the criteria, than I think the board believes we do. And certainly than I believe we do. It's not, and it may come across as we don't hear you, or we don't take into consideration all the concerns you brought. And it's, and we certainly hear you, we consider those things we're allowed to consider under the criteria, and if it meets the criteria, my understanding of the law is that it gets the special permit. If that's not how we're supposed to be deciding these cases, I need to hear that from, you know, our appointing authority, from the city council, and probably from the state, because that is my understanding of what a special permit is, and how it is distinct from a variance. Context is really important in terms of considering the urban design of a particular building in, and how the materials fit in, and how the landscaping relates to the area, and what the windows are like, and a lot of those really important touches that can help create a more livable community and a better place. Context is not, for me at least, a permit-by-permit consideration when it comes to the scale of a project. That, to me, should be done through zoning. If you are saying that a project is just too big in that it's too many units, it's too many square feet, the FAR is too big, that, to me, is a planning consideration. It's absolutely important for the planning board and the city council to decide and look at on a citywide and neighborhood basis, but it is not appropriate to revisit that on a permit-by-permit basis. And people have the right to expect, when they submit an application for a special permit, that they have certain vested property rights if they comply with the zoning. And they are complying with the zoning when they get a special permit that meets the criteria. And again, that is the distinction between a special permit and a variance. If you meet the criteria with a special permit, it is complying with the zoning.
And I think, indeed, there are a lot of procedural things that we can do, and there are a lot of process things that we can do to make things clearer to the public. I also think that the statistic of 49 to zero is the most meaningless statistic around, because the way this board operates and the way staff operates is that they go through many, many iterations of a project until it comes to us, and then we work on it over a number of hearings until we reach a point where we believe that it is in compliance with the requirements of the zoning ordinance for the granting of a special permit. And I think it's important for all of us to remember that if a special permit is denied, it doesn't mean nothing is going to be built. There is an underlying zoning ordinance that allows things to happen. And generally, the projects that come to us, even though what the public may mostly feel they're seeing is that, oh, you're getting a, developer is getting a special benefit, it's actually, by following the requirements of the ordinance for a special permit, the public interest, the city at large, is getting a benefit and a better building and a better project. If we say, if we're thinking that the city needs greater density, well, that's going to mean you're going to have to have bigger buildings. And the people who say, who don't like bigger buildings and who say, you're taking away my sky and my view, that's their point of view, and it's a perfectly valid point of view. It's just one that has to be weighed against another point of view and go where the city wants to go at that time. So a lot of it is the zoning ordinance, a lot of it is a master plan, a lot of it is the various design guidelines, and, you know, we have to try to put that all together. And we clearly welcome and need the input from everybody else. But when looking at any one project, whether it's in East Cambridge, or North Cambridge, or West Cambridge, people tend to think, yes, this is a good idea, but not in my neighborhood, let's put it in some other neighborhood. And so if every neighborhood is saying the same thing, nothing is going to happen, and the city has goals and desires that have been incorporated into the zoning ordinance. And I think it's going to have to continue that way, because otherwise, nothing will be accomplished in the city.
I'll speak about three points, inspired by the professor. I want to speak about democracy. I think the most exciting part of the planning board for me is actually the democratic process that happens here, the conversation that happens here. And I agree entirely with Jan, we're in the 21st century now, why is it necessary that we all want to be here in order to have that conversation? We have marvelous machines and technology, which could mean that we could have a broader demographic than we usually see here opining on issues of planning. People who might have families, people who might not have cars, people who might work at night could participate in this great conversation, and we could make that democracy even more beautiful. I want to talk about design, because I believe fundamentally that design matters. It changes the way that we interact with each other, it changes the way that a city feels about itself, it changes our values, I believe it can affect our values, it can affect our discourse. I believe it absolutely matters. But I will also tell you this, that this planning board member understands that we're planning for growth. This city is going to grow, it has to grow. That's a fundamental value that we have in the United States of America. This economy may transform, and it will grow, or this city will die. So we are planning for growth here, and that change is sometimes uncomfortable. And that's why the conversation can get salty, and that's why we can disagree. But make no bones about it, that's in fact what is happening in this room, and it better be what is happening in this room, or this city will cease to exist. The last thing I want to talk about is civics, actually. The last thing I want to talk about is civics, actually. And related to civics, and it's something that I believe in my core, in my heart, my most beautiful moments on this planet have been involved, have been when I've been involved in things that relate to civics. And that's a word that also contains civilization, it also contains the word "civil." So the lowest moments are when the conversation is not civil in this room. And those are the moments when I think, "You know what? I have a lot of other interests. I have a lot of other interests, I have a lot of other ways in which I can contribute to this community, and maybe I should spend the hours in those other activities rather than in here." And tonight, there was a moment when it wasn't civil. And no one, no one stood up, no one from the public, no one from the staff, and none of my fellow board members have yet to point this out, but I know they're all feeling it, they're too polite. What was questioned was whether we had the public interest in our hearts. And that really hurts, when somebody gets up in public and tells me that this chairman does not have the public interest in this. What do you think he's doing here? What do you think he's done here for decades? And I'm not going to sit here and let that comment go by unanswered. I'm sorry, I will not. What do you think, what do you think my fellow citizens on this board are here for? What is their interest? It's a rhetorical question, I don't need to know.
Good evening. I'm glad to be able to talk about the process rather than the project. I would like to mention that one of my big frustrations, one of the things I don't understand is a lot of what has been said before, but I think one mention that I haven't heard is about that famous Article 1043 of the ordinance, which talks about the public interest that you have to defend, and that often, in many of the way that the decision-making process is going, we don't feel, and that I'm saying "we" because I've spoken with others who feel the same way, that that public interest is actually defended, that it is taken into consideration during the process. And therefore, what happens is that it seems that the voice of the community is not heard, because I think that the community has at heart the public interest in mind. And when you don't see that public interest in your decision, and in the way that you ask the question and the way you discuss, and I can talk about the courthouse as being significant in that aspect, we had many, many, many hours, the same way as for the parlay, for Fresh Pond, but for the courthouse, we had many, many, many hours of public comment. And when it actually came to the discussion and the decision, on the end of decision, none of those public comments were taken in consideration. I can tell you that all of the members of the community, that I can, I'm just giving you our perspective, maybe it is, but I don't see it and I don't feel it, and when I, maybe when I read the actual results, then we'll take it, but we really, I can tell you that as a community, it's something that was, that struck us, that it felt like the community input had not been taken into consideration. And in the idea of 1043, I don't know if something that's applicable all the time, but that idea and the fact that it's written, the public interest, that you're defending the public interest, that part seems to always be missing. And I don't know how you change the process to make that come to the forefront, so that we feel that, in a more clear way, that our participation actually matters. Thank you.
Thank you.
Langley Keys, 92 Chilton Street. Good evening, it's nice to be here again, I appreciate enormously this opportunity to convey some thoughts we have about future activities with the board. I'd like to put my comment just in the context of reframing and reflecting on the Cambridge Planning Board's mandate. Now, it seems to me that the mandate of the planning board is really very different, but the process and procedures and participation issues, which have really absorbed a lot of time, and an understandable and important concern. What I would like to focus on is the issue of mandate, what it is that, in fact, the planning board is supposed to do. And I think there are three ways, or three aspects of that mandate, which I will try to get through in three minutes, which just happens to be that I don't have a lot of time. And in a sense, these are informed by my experience, in both going through a number of planning board meetings, and also, and I told you this before, and it's something that sticks with me, reading through all the transcripts of all the PB decisions in the Eilwijk Park area, which I think is an exercise which I commend again to everyone, at least once in their life. So my concerns come out of that engagement. And the first one of that, and this is something that Nancy mentioned, and I'll go through it quickly, which is basically the whole issue of, is how broad are the check marks that you make? How many boxes do you check when you make a decision? Is it really, to go to the bottom line, is this really an expanded architectural review board, or is it a planning board which is concerned with the project in context, the project in situ, the project in place, and that that's what drives the discussion of the building, not the other way around? There's a lot of ways of putting that, but I think there's not really a consensus on that. I think the board has moved a long way from that memorable hearing last April, when there was discussion of a lot of things beside mandate, but it's still, I think, not clear and ought to be crystal clear, how many boxes there are, how broad they are, and what you really have the right and the responsibility and the freedom to engage in. So that's the first one, and I think that's an issue of getting that down so it's clear to everybody. The second is really something that I don't think we talk much about. This is a special permit. It's a special, why is it special? It's special because the public sector is giving something to a private developer that they want, which they would not otherwise have unless given to them by the public. Question, what is the public getting back for the giving of that special permit? Does the private developer simply get it by right, or is there some reciprocal relationship here that in some sense, it's a two-way street? If it is a two-way street, I think there should be discussion as that part of that issue, which is part of, again, the mandate of the board, what in terms of its public role, and looking at it in terms of public purpose, is it getting back from a developer who's going to get a great deal out of you in terms of the permit they get? And third, and this is something as I mentioned before, is this whole question of the proactive role of the CDD and how it relates to the planning board. And I would just urge you that there is a lot more possibility there.
The board's in purple, I'm asking that company to respond.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay. It's just that that relationship and a proactive role on the part of the CDD, not a kind of, here's a few facts, I'd rather see it in terms of information, and almost even a point of view, and a narrative which says to you all, "Here's what we think," not just laying out the facts. So it's basically these three aspects of a mandate of the board. How broad are the boxes is number one. What's the public purpose, what in the special permit? And third, this much closer proactive relationship between the planning board and the CDD staff. Thank you very much for the extra time.